Good afternoon. I am Catherine Royer, Vice Mayor. Our Mayor Bob Morris is running late. So I'm opening this meeting, the regular Town Council meeting, the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, on Monday, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. We will be going into executive session. Oh, do we want to do a roll call first?
Roll call.
Councilmember Augurton?
Here.
Councilmember Bunch?
Here.
Councilmember Alkma?
Here.
Councilmember McGuire?
Present.
Councilmember Rhodes? Vice Mayor Roy?
Here.
Mayor Morris?
So we have the roll call, and now we will go into an executive session. Council discussion, consultation, direction to, and legal advice from the town attorney pursuant to ARS eight dash four three one dash oh three, per N A, per N three, and per N A, per N four, regarding the Continental Mountain Ranch Water Development Agreement. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Thank you. We'll go into executive session.
We want to vote on that. Bye.
Vote on that. Vote on that. Hi.
Bye.
Hi.
Welcome to the regular Town Council meeting, the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. The meeting is now called to order. Have we had the roll call vote?
Yes.
We have. Okay. We just completed an executive session, and we're at the point for the pledge allegiance. Richard, would you like to lead us in the pledge allegiance? You would not. Okay.
He's from the UK.
Oh.
I will lead us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, on mission, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public announcements. Does council have anything they'd like to announce to the public?
I'd like to brag a little bit. Last Thursday, I had my acreage sprayed with pre-emergent. We got an inch of rain on top of it, so now it's going to work really good.
Does that really help?
Yeah, oh yeah.
That's what it rains?
Yeah.
What pre-emergent did you use? Never mind.
Samara? Samara?
I'll check with you. That doesn't sound, but it does ring a bell. Called the public.
No one wishing to speak?
One wishes to speak. Okay. Town manager report?
Mayor, members of council, I just want to remind for the public that we are still taking comments, suggestions on the Cave Creek Town Core Plan, and we do have a page set up on our website, cavecreekaz.gov, with the schedule of the upcoming meetings, but you can also just go online. There's a form there to fill out, and you can make suggestions or suggestions for changes, additions, et cetera. The Cave Creek welcome sign that was damaged will soon be installed. It, the, the base of where the sign is, has been repaired, and it needs to cure. So next week, that sign will be going back up. And it's very, very close, looking like the, the one that was damaged and came down. The town engineer did a good job sort of recreating that. The Thanksgiving holiday is this week. We are closed on Thursday. Town Hall is always, is closed on Friday, but Wednesday, a town hall closes at noon. And then I just want to put a plug out for the Cave Creek Tourism Bureau. They are participating in the hashtag Hope Kids Toy Drive, and so we're encouraging residents and patrons of the town to stop by and donate for that toy drive. They also have decorated their donation box. Their design is Snow Girl Hollyberry, and the city sun times is, for those who are participating, they are having a contest. And if you go to the Facebook page for City Sun Times and vote for Snow Girl Hollyberry for the Tourism Bureau, if they win, they would get a free quarter, I think it's a quarter page ad in the next city sun times, quarter or half. I'm not sure what the size. So please vote for Snow Girl Hollyberry, but more importantly, donate to the toy drive, and thank you.
Thank you. On the consent agenda tonight is the approval of partial right-of-way abandonment, approval of resolution number R two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-seven, a resolution of the mayor and town council, abandoning such right, title, and interest as the town possesses in the north ten feet, a Blue Ridge Drive adjacent to parcel APN two eleven dash fourteen dash zero three nine A. And if anyone has an objection to this, we can pull it. If not, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes seven zero. Onto the general agenda items, the council discussion approval of the salary structure as proposed in the two thousand and twenty-three employee compensation study conducted by Logic Compensation Group, presented by the town manager and Logic Compensation Group.
Mayor, members of council, the deputy town manager and I worked on this project and engaged the services of Logic Compensation. Lori Messer is here to provide a presentation and answer any questions on the analysis that she's completed. The town last completed a compensation study in two thousand and twenty, and the standard is to revisit your compensation every three years. Recently, we've had some difficulty in recruiting, particularly for some technical positions, including utilities, and we found that our ranges for the various positions were low on the high end. So we were trying to recruit positions, and compared to other communities in the valley, their salaries were at, were above our maximum range for certain positions. So that was one reason we wanted to really move through on the compensation portion of the study. We are not asking in, in this, as the end results, we're finding that this allowance, we want to align the town's pay position in the market with other municipal organizations. We established that we would, the goal is to achieve the competitive position at the median, the fifty percentile of the market. All of our employees, based on the ranges that are being proposed, require no salary adjustments or, you know, to get up to the minimum, no equity adjustments are necessarily. This is just making adjustment in the range itself, the lows, the midpoint and the high. It's helping to ensure the salary structure remains externally competitive. It helps ensure that employee pay aligns with the market movement, and it supports retention and employee value to the organization. Lori Messer is here. We asked her to sit at the table, and she'll go through a presentation and answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Lori. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an overview of the study that was performed on behalf of the town by Logic Compensation Group. The first thing that we're, not sure where I need to point this. Not sure where I need to point this. Oh, there it goes. Maybe, maybe I was just having a gentle touch. I apologize. So this evening, I'd like to go over the study background, the overview of our process, how we kicked off this study, what the study entailed, along with our recommendations to the town. So we were engaged to review the town's compensation program and make recommendations to help the city achieve the market position that it desired. The goals of the study were to, first of all, document the compensa, the town's compensation philosophy and supporting strategies. This will help guide future studies down the road, and it clarifies the town's position. We wanted to first identify what is the town's position in the market, and then develop a pay structure that is aligned with the compensation philosophy that was established at the onset of the study. So there are several high-level tasks that we went through in conducting this study. The first was identifying what the town's compensation philosophy and supporting strategies were. This helps to guide us through the rest of the study and make sure that everyone is on the same page. Then we go out and we collect the market data. Once we get the market data back, we vet it, we analyze it. We make recommendations as to what the town can do in order to achieve the market position it desires. And then we make some recommendations with regards to maintaining the plan moving forward. So at the onset of this study, at the initiation, we did meet with town leadership to understand the current state of the compensation system as well as the desired state. We assisted the town in identifying a compensation philosophy, and as Carrie mentioned earlier, it was determined that the city would like to achieve at least the median of the market. It's a very common metric. More than eighty percent of organizations in the world of work use the median as their primary metric for establishing their pay systems. Additionally, we worked with the town to, oh, back to that one, the primary metric itself, though, what, what are we looking at when we're looking at the median of the market? We're looking at what people are actually being paid, because that's what, what an organization has to compete with when they go out and try to attract people to the organization. We also worked with the town to identify comparator organizations to survey, as well as what jobs to survey. And the jobs to survey, we actually benchmarked all of the jobs. So we attempted to gather data on all jobs here at the town. So this is an overview of the organizations. Those organizations that are in orange font did not complete any or a portion of the survey. We were able to go out to their websites, however, or contact them and get the information that we needed in order to use their data. Those organizations that are highlighted in yellow are larger organizations. It's important to note that for the management level positions here at the town, we did not include those organizations in the analysis. We felt that the scope of responsibility was significantly different, and we focused more on the smaller organizations. However, when it comes to individual contributor jobs, and I'll use like water and wastewater types of roles, the town does compete with some of these other larger organizations, whereas the work is the same. So there's no scope issue with those, in our opinion. Um, the next thing-
May I just ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
So the cities that we're, that you're comparing, our town is, those are the ones that are in white, like City of Casa Grande would be in?
For the management level jobs, yes.
And City of Buckeye would be out?
For the management level jobs only. We did use, all of those organizations were used to assess the town's competitiveness with non-management jobs, so individual contributor type jobs, working supervisor type of jobs. But all those highlighted in yellow, when we looked at the manager and above jobs, we did not include their data in assessing the town's competitiveness for those management level jobs.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, the next thing that we did is some of these organizations like Sedona, Chino Valley, they're quite a ways away from Cave Creek, but they are of a similar size and makeup as Cave Creek. So they were included in here because of that. So one of the things that we do is we apply geographic differentials to the data. And basically, what these geographic differentials do is they normalize data to be reflective of the cost of labor here in Cave Creek. So any number, any percentage on this chart that is greater than a hundred percent, that means that we took their pay data, and we increased it by a certain percentage. So Sedona, for example, when we got their data, we increased it by four point nine percent because the cost of labor here in Cave Creek is four point nine percent higher than it is in Sedona. And we get this information from the Economic Research Institute. They've been around since the mid-sixties, gathering pay data across the nation. And so they have a lot of historical information, and it's a common source used by compensation professionals to determine how salary figures should be adjusted. So you're looking at apples to apples. A good example would be that we wouldn't want to take a place like New York City and use their data straight across the board for Cave Creek because there's a big, it's an extreme example, but that, that's the premise is the same. So the benchmark jobs, again, we did benchmark all of the jobs here at the town. Those org, jobs that are highlighted or bold, orange font, those are the jobs that we did not include data from the large organizations to assess competitiveness. So it was all like the management level jobs. Um, what we did, once we, we developed a custom survey and we sent it out to all of the comparator organizations, and we asked them to tell us, what is a job that at your organization that is comparable to a job here at the, the town? And we did, we defined those roles, and we sent that to them. Once we got the data back from them, then we go through a QA process on our end. We did ask them for, what's the job title they use for the job here at Cave Creek? What's the annual base hours worked, average time in job, salary range? Is it an exempt or a non-exempt job? How many incumbents do you have? And what's the average actual salary? We vetted through all of that. We made follow-up phone calls and emails with the organizations to verify any questionable information. For those organizations, or for those benchmark jobs where we didn't get at least five matches, we cannot, we followed the US Department of Justice and the Federal Trade Commission guidelines on conducting salary surveys that says in order to analyze and draw conclusions on data, you need to have at least five matches. So there were a small number of jobs that did not have five matches. Really, where it really came into play is a couple of slides down the road, and I'll, I'll share with you that momentarily. So once we looked at all of the data and we analyzed it, we said, all right, how does the city or the town compare to the market? And we use what's called a market index. And any market, when we compare the actual salaries in the market to the town of Cave Creek's pay structure, if the market indices is one hundred percent, that means that you're spot on. Anything that is within ten percent, either, so it could range from ninety percent to a hundred and ten percent, that is considered competitive. Anything outside of that, so anything less than ninety percent or greater than a hundred and ten percent is considered misaligned. Ideally, most organizations like to be within five percent of the market rate, if possible. Our goal when we looked at everything was, we wanted to make sure at a minimum, everything was within that ten percent range. So based on that, here is some metrics that we put together in looking at the data. So we looked at three different scenarios. The first scenario, which is the one that we, we felt was most appropriate, was the metrics were, we looked at all organizations that we saw previously on the slides. However, we did exclude the large organizations for the management level jobs due to scope. Then we looked at all organizations. So all organizations means that we took even those large organizations and included them in assessing the management level jobs. Then the last scenario we looked at was small organizations only. Those that were like under a population of at or below fifteen thousand residents. The issue with the small orgs only, you'll notice there's a note about that one. Those numbers are really unreliable because forty-one percent of the benchmark jobs didn't have at least five matches. So this is only representative of fifty-nine percent of the town's jobs. So we weren't really comfortable with those numbers. It what, didn't give us the bigger picture. And actually, they were like, at, at least when it comes to the primary metric of the town's midpoint versus actual pay, the least favorable for the town. We were focusing on that, all orgs excluding the large orgs for management. And what we found here is when we looked at the actual salary, your, the town's actual salaries compared to the market's actual salaries for those matches, the town fell within five percent. So actual pay itself is well-aligned with market. The problem arose when we looked at the salary ranges, they were misaligned with market. And the challenge there for an organization, when your salary ranges are much lower, like when we look at the maximums, the town's maximums compared to the market, the town is thirteen percent below the market. If you're trying to recruit someone into a job where it's a lateral move, they're probably going to hesitate because they're going to see that my maximum earnings potential is less than what it is perhaps where I'm at. So we've found that the actual salaries were in really good shape. However, it was the ranges that needed to be adjusted to be more competitive with market.
And what, what is the, I'm, I'm thinking back to, to a long time ago, but that the, there typically was a a typical percentage that the, that the, the bottom of the range and the top of range is compared to the midpoint. Is that still, is that philosophy still in use today?
Yes, as a matter of-
And what is, what is the typical supposed to be? Is there a-
So it can range anywhere. Lower level jobs tend to be smaller range spreads from minimum to maximum. The typical is about forty percent, anywhere from twenty-five to forty percent. As you move higher in the job hierarchy in the organization, the range spreads get wider because your tenure tends to be longer there. So you don't want people capping out so quickly. Also, the, the learning curve to get to that market rate tends to be longer, the higher the level of the position.
Thank you.
So in this case, and we'll get to that in the next slide, we chose a fifty percent range spread across the board for all positions. So it's consistent for the whole structure, for simplicity purposes. And, and that's another methodology, but we always do look at what should the range width be? And we do look at the market. When we're looking at what's the market range width on average for, you know, all of the organizations we surveyed, and it was fifty percent as well. So we wanted to align on that perspective also. So when we looked at the town's midpoint compared to what's actually being paid in the market, that was the, where the town was mostly off the mark. Because the, when we looked at actual salaries in the market and compared it to your midpoint, you were twenty-six and a half percent below market there. But on the bright side, people's individual pay is well-aligned. So based on that data that we collected, now it was time to develop the pay structure. So we used that data that we collected in the survey, and we created a pay structure that is shown here. Now, this pay structure, again, we, for the non-management jobs, we did use all of the organizations that were surveyed. But for the management level salary ranges, we did not use those large organizations identified earlier. So we only use the smaller organizations for the management level jobs. And one of the things when we, when we looked at that, the question was, is if we do that, is there going to be compression between the non-management level jobs and the management level jobs, like supervisor subordinate? And in this case, when we built the structure, that was not an issue. So we did take a look at that as well.
I have a question. I see that you have twenty-three grades. At my last employer, we condensed the grades significantly, so there wasn't such a spread among different positions. Had you considered doing that with us?
So when we looked at the, the range of data, the market data, what we did is we looked at what's the lowest amount paid in the market and what's the highest? And how does that, we did do a seven percent spread between each of them. You could reduce that. The, one of the cons, so for every option, there's always pros and cons. One of the cons of that is, is when placing jobs, if you have fourteen percent, so let's say you reduce this into half, so now you have, let's say, eleven pay grades. When you do that, now you've got fourteen percent between each pay grade. That can be beneficial to some and not as beneficial to others because some people could be, you could be overpaying for some work just because of where you have to place it, and you could be underpaying for some because you're trying to get that market rate. You want to place the job in the structure where the market rate is closest to the midpoint.
But don't you have maybe one person in some of these grades?
I forget off the top of my head. I don't have the allocation specifically that very well could be. There are also some of these grade levels that aren't even being occupied at this time. So not all twenty-three grades have jobs assigned to them.
Okay.
If I could clarify, Mayor, Vice Mayor, we had a structure that had condensed some years ago, and we corrected that with the last compensation study because the pitfall of having that broad range is that over years with people staying, you know, employed with the town, that's a really good thing that they stay employed as valued employees, but their salary could become misaligned and be overpaid, and you're not reaching a cap that isn't aligned with the market and should be adjusted only when the market adjusts. So we, we had some people overpaid.
Okay.
Great question. Um, the next thing that we did is we looked at employee comp ratios. So in the current structure, the comp ratio tells employees' position in the salary range. Anything over a hundred percent means that they're paid over the range midpoint. Anything below a hundred percent means that they're paid below the midpoint. When we looked at the current employee population, eighty percent of employees in today's structure have a comp ratio that is greater than the midpoint, and it averaged a hundred and twelve percent. Okay. When we looked at employees' pay today, and we compared that into, into the proposed pay structure, that number went almost in half. Forty-two percent of employees now have a pay rate that is above the range midpoint with an average comp ratio of ninety-seven point seven percent. So it, the proposed pay range made a significant difference in employee opportunity for pay growth moving forward.
Okay.
All right. So we do have some administrative recommendations when it comes to the compensation system. The first would, of course, be to adopt the proposed pay structure. And the reason for that recommendation is that this proposed pay structure aligns the town at the fiftieth percentile of the market and should hopefully be beneficial in aiding the town in its recruitment and retention efforts moving forward. The second recommend- Um, the second um recommendation is that we recommend that pay structures, the actual salary ranges. Be adjusted on an annual basis to keep up with the changes in cost of labor over time. So historically, now with COVID, there was um, so a really crazy structure increases. And employee pay increases, but historically, we have seen salary structures move about. You know, one and a half to two percent every year. That helps to make sure that your structure stays aligned with the market. Um, the next thing is, we recommend is to um apply annual increases to employee pay. Based on um fiscal affordability and sustainability, of course. Um, that also helps to ensure that employee pay remain aligned with the market as well. Obviously, the town is doing a great job based on those previous statistics we saw when we looked at market pay. And compared to the town's employee pay. We also recommend that, you know, since you'll be applying increases hopefully to employee pay on an annual basis. You'll be adjusting your pay structures on an annual basis. Um, we recommend that organizations do um a compensation study such as this. Um, it doesn't have to be as comprehensive because you already have your compensation philosophy established. But if you do um a survey of these organizations um every three years, it helps to make sure that you maintain pace with the market as well. So it answers the question, what we've been doing with respect to employee pay adjustments and structure adjustments. Have we been doing the right thing to make sure that we maintain pace with the market? So we stay competitive and don't get into a position of, um, we see a lot of organizations that they'll do a compensation study. And they don't do anything um with their pay structures for five years. And then they go to do a study and it's a really um shocking cost to get people back up to market. So that's what you're trying to avoid by doing um those things. So that concludes um my formal presentation. I am um happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Mr. Chairman, um, I, on your last slide, can you put that back up?
Yes.
I just had a question for you on annual adjustments. Is that automatic or is that a recommendation for the budgeting process? Or is the staff recommending its own increases? How would this work?
So are you, you're talking about the second main bullet or the third one?
Second and third.
The second and third. With the second one, um, organizations can go, um, there are resources available. Lots of survey sources that will tell you, they go out and survey organizations and ask them how they're gonna move their pay structure. So that addresses the second bullet. So you have research to support your recommendation for making changes to the structure. Um, another way to do that is organizations, um, let's say we don't have those surveys, that's fine. You can do a quick um pulse survey to your comparator organizations and ask them, are you adjusting your pay structures? For the upcoming fiscal year, so how much? Now, those salary range adjustments may not have a monetary um impact to organizations. Because, just because the salary range, the salary range movement is separate from employee pay movement.
No, I understand. I guess my question is, uh, are you asking for the council in this adoption of this program based on your research? This would be self motive, this would be self-initiated, automatic of those two bullets every year?
We would recommend that the, the, the town take a look at what's going on in the market and make recommendations through the budgeting process. Of what would be appropriate movement.
Well, does the staff do the analysis and report that to the council? Or are we agreeing to basically an automatic clause that those two scales will be perpetually increasing?
Oh, I know, it would not be, it, it's, it just, this is just saying, we recommend that you look at those things every year. Whether or not you have a, uh, the um staff makes a recommendation for movement is completely separate. It, it would not necessarily, I don't recommend an automatic flat because the market changes. So you always wanna know, you wanna understand what's going on in the market. So you would not, we're, we're just saying, you should look at it every year and you should keep pace with market.
Mr. Mayor, I just one more question. Um, I didn't see any mention of CPI or other federal indicators for the cost of living and so forth. Is that not necessarily part of the program?
When we did this study, it wasn't looking at how has, how have things changed over time? What this looked at is from a specific group of organizations, what's happening right now? What are people being paid? And that's what was used as the basis to build the pay structure. Now, some organizations do use um CPI to adjust structures. It's not a metric that we typically recommend to adjust pay. Because CPI encompasses a lot of things that are not associated with the work that's being performed. But it's gas, housing, all of these other things, milk, um, you know, this basket of goods that gets looked at from year to year. What we recommend that organizations look at, because you're paying for work, we recommend that you look at how is pay changing in the market? Because how CPI changes and how pay, supply and demand of those two things can be very different. And historically, we have seen that pay, change in pay over time is really greater. In most cases than the CPI change.
One more question on my side, Mr. Mayor. Uh, what number do you use for public sector employment in Arizona for E R E employee related expenses? And do we have a number for Cave Creek?
We did not look at that information as a part of this study. That was outside the scope of the study.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Carrie, couldn't you describe what the process is for um staff salary adjustment?
First of all, we do look at the Western Region Index and specifically for the Phoenix area, just to, to gauge what generally the market is doing. But um in terms of government, there are um HR directors and that are very active. And have a listserv of all cities and towns. And they do communicate across the board on what um adjustments to their um pay ranges, that this salary structure. That they intend to propose based on what they've seen in the market. And usually the larger cities have a lot more um action, they have a lot more employees, they have a lot more turnover and they have a bigger staff. And so they often will lead the way, but then the smaller um cities and towns do participate in um building their budget. And figuring out what would be reasonable to ask. So it might be two percent. I mean, typically it was one and a half to three percent for years and years until COVID hit. It really was fairly stable in, in the adjustment of their ranges. Um, but then, um, so that's what we have done over the years and just proposed that as part of the, the budget itself.
Right.
And that would be up to council to put that amount in the budget at, at council's discretion.
Uh, Carrie, do we do signing bonuses or have we had a history of doing signing bonuses?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember, this year in the budget, um, Councilmember Rhodes had suggested to put, to set aside a separate fund. Uh, of amount of money, I think it was two and a half percent, which is sitting in the town manager's budget for um recruitment and retention. Which was the first time that we have done that. We have used those funds to retain people. And um we use some of the funds in different ways uh recruiting. For example, we could uh put additional leave time upfront in a bank for somebody, things like that. So we use different, different things depending on the position. And um, you know, if it's a senior manager versus some other positions, there might be a little bit more incentive. And it also depends on how difficult, um, the difficulty in recruiting for a particular person. But we don't have a specific policy across the board and we give this for every position. Uh, like some of the larger communities do because they're recruiting for hundreds of positions, not one or two.
Money was, was, per the conversation that we had that, that money was supposed to be earmarked for the lower level employees. Which Sean was having a hard time being uh retained or having a hard time retaining. Um, as I recall, what we said was, uh, what Sean said was, he had a hard time keeping people. Uh, because we tended to be the training ground for, for Glendale and other places. And that, uh, that, uh, that's when we set aside that money for those lower level employees.
Uh, Mayor, a council member, actually, a lot of those positions are, are very well paid, higher positions. And um unfortunately, we haven't been able to fill some of those positions, so we haven't had an opportunity. Um, but, but making this adjustment in the ranges, um, I think will help recruit people. Because they'll see there's a growth opportunity once they get with the town that they're not topped out at that point, because they were at the top of their ranges.
Other questions. Um, I, I have a, a couple of questions here, kind of, um, do all cities do this? All cities and towns?
Yes, we've actually done, um, um, most cities do, some do it internally. Like I know an East Valley city that does it internally because they have a large staff. Um, I can tell you personally, we've done um work for Surprise, Avondale, Talis and El Mirage. Um, Queen Creek, um, Apache Junction.
I, I wasn't.
Yeah, there's a long line.
Listen, I just, yes or no?
Say that all cities do that. I think that, that I, the majority, yes, some do it internally, some do it with an external.
And if, yeah, um, so it, the, the midpoint is based upon the actual salaries paid in comparison with these different towns?
Yes.
Okay. Is, is there a town that is a pay setter? I mean, we're always looking at, okay, what, when budget time comes up, we always look at, you know, what the Western, whatever that was in the, and CPI. And things like that to put, put a gauge on it. I- is there a town in Arizona that's on your list here that is a pay setter and increasing salary?
That's a very difficult question um to answer. Um, I know that there are cities that have met um comparison points that are much higher. I know an East Valley city that does the seventy-fifth percentile of the market. Um, if there is someone who is, I know, and a, a West Valley city that pays, you know, the median plus five percent, which is really up there. Um, so it's hard to say, but when you're looking at the median of the market in general, those um people who are the pay setters. Who are up there and those that are the low payers, um, doing it in the median of the market. Though, those people really don't impact the overall results, although everybody is chasing them, right? But.
Well, yeah, I, we're, we're chasing somebody. I'm not sure who, but.
Well, with post-COVID, I do know just from the work that we have done um in the valley, there were some pretty significant jumps. Uh, last year to the tune of eight, nine percent, some, it, it, they were huge last year.
Now, uh, s- some cities like Phoenix especially has just tons of little intermediate steps and time-based and all that. And I think some of it maybe even unionized. And uh, others are on something else, uh, perhaps more merit-based. Is, is it typical, uh, is, which is more uh, prevalent? Especially with the, the cities that we compete with, smaller cities, the Wickenbergs, the Fountain Hills, Carefree. The ones that are kind of in our benchmarking area. Uh, do, are, are they mainly on merit systems?
The answer is yes, with the exception of, and this doesn't apply to you, um, the swarm police and fire. Those tend to be steps, but the rest of the population is merit.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody else?
I just want, I just can't miss the opportunity. Um, and I, I'm kind of asking Carrie, is there an opportunity? Or both of you, is there an opportunity to do maybe a tail on top of this? And look at uh employee professional development, training, sufficiency and paying for certifications and licenses for individuals employed by the town? And I don't know if people are paying for their own licenses and so forth, but, and, and I don't even know the answer to the question. Do we have adequate funding for uh town staff continuing professional development, conventions, travel, that type of thing?
Mayor, uh, council member, yes, the town does pay for that. And um, in, in each position, those certifications or requirements or um continuous, continuing education. Are identified and um those are budgeted each year. So if the marshal needs his certifications, um, someone in finance has a CPA. They need to keep their education credits up every year. All of that um is paid for by the town and is budgeted each year. We do have other policies, for example, um educational opportunities if someone wants to grow. And there's a um college course or courses that they wanna take that's pertinent to their position. The town will reimburse based on a, a sufficient grade, things like that.
And then just one last question, um, would your organization be able to do an analysis of employee related expenses for the town? As an add-on to the study, perhaps being completed?
Yes.
Funding available or not, but at some point we ought to try to perhaps.
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember, um, we have asked for um, uh, quote, for all of our benefits. And after, as a separate um project or study after this one. We just wanted to make sure that our, our salary ranges were sufficient so that we could continue with our ongoing recruitment. For the positions we need to fill and then we'll be working on all of our benefits, including the education and um, et cetera.
Thank you. You can ask questions, okay? So um, at this point, the, we're looking for, oh, excuse me, we have public comment.
I have no one wishing to speak.
Okay. Um, looking for a motion then to approve the salary structure?
I'll make it. Motion to approve the salary structure as proposed in the twenty-twenty-three employee compensation study.
Second. Nothing financial here, so the lawyer's not looking at me, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 The ayes have it, motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much, Ms. Ms.
Thank you very much.
Council discussion approval of the twenty-twenty-three Town Council Strategic Plan presented by the mayor. Okay.
They asked for public comment.
We, the, the, the motion, yeah, the motion's over now. That, we saw public comment on the other items on the agenda though. Okay, the, the uh, the, the Town Council in this very room here uh did a one, a one day, but with a lot of prep work. The staff was involved, uh, the council was involved in setting the strategic plan for twenty-twenty-three. And this is a phased approach, whereas the, the strat plan is being done in November here. And about in January, we start the budget process with our new budgeting system. And uh, uh, that will result in a series of meetings, then an adopted budget. And by law, the uh, once that budget is adopted, we cannot spend more than that budget requires by law. Uh, so it's important that budget uh be as accurate as possible and this is the basis for that. Next step is gonna be the C I P. We look at what investments the town needs, uh, because that is important information. It also goes into that budget and it's all mixed together uh to come up with how the town spends the money. We have the document that, that I believe everyone on council uh has seen. The, the thing we haven't seen here is uh. Here's a message from the Town Council, I'll just read this. The collaborative efforts of the town's leadership team and Town Council have produced an exceptional outcome in crafting the new strategic plan. This all-encompassing plan serves as a guiding beacon, illuminating the path toward realization of our town's vision. It affirms our commitment to implementing components of the general plan and projects essential to the town's future. Our strategic commitment is concentrated in five focus areas. Fiscal sustainability, economic vitality, safe and vibrant community, innovative and high-performing organization. And infrastructure. Through this strategic focus, we stand well-prepared to get, to navigate the trajectory of our future. The strategic plan goes beyond addressing routine operational services, creating a realm of opportunity and presenting. creating a realm of opportunity and presenting a clear roadmap to complete specific projects. It equips both the Town Council and our Town Manager with the means to direct staff efforts toward pivotal projects that will shape and improve the town. Express our sincere appreciation, gratitude to the Town Manager and Town Leadership Teams whose valuable insights and unwavering dedication have played a crucial role in shaping this plan. And it truly is a plan done by all the upper levels of government, both at the staff level and at the elected level. Carrie, did you want to say something about your message in here? It's your choice.
I think that it really was a collaborative effort. The Town Leadership Team also met with the consultants and spent an entire day kind of preparing and drafting some information to be shared with the council. So it would help the council on the day that we all got together, helped the council finalize the strategic plan. And I thought the process went well, and I, I thought that everyone participated and came to a good consensus that the council agreed with. And so we asked to bring this forward for council's approval. And then we, on staff, will, will move forward in developing our benchmarks that will be included in the budget for the next year on how we're going to meet the goals of the strategic plan.
Thank you. I'll just read our vision statement and the mission statement. Cave Creek is a dynamic, safe and well maintained, this is the vision. Cave Creek is a dynamic, safe and well-maintained community where growth and preservation are balanced and public needs and challenges are met. The mission statement, our mission is to support the community by effectively managing public services and fostering our unique southwestern ways of life. The core values, objective, analysis, creativity, teamwork, productivity, respect, professionalism, fiscal and environmental stewardship, and integrity.
I can only make one quick comment. I think objective analysis was together. They, they printed it as two separate objectives, but I think it's, as I recall from our board.
So noted, okay. On that, I would open this up to council then for comments, questions?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor, I think this, this strategic plan is the answer that, that follows the question that often comes when we as elected people walk around town and they, and folks say, what are y'all doing over there? What's going on? And how are you going about it? And this, this exercise, working with staff and with the council, I think results in a plan that we can actually hang a budget on successfully. And I'm really proud to have been part of that. And, and the last little piece is, I don't know how we can share this. I'd love to have a strategic plan pamphlet or something that could be around town for people to look at and to say, okay, what they're doing right here, right now, is in that plan and I can find it. So that's, those are my thoughts. I'm just really happy with this.
Mister Mayor, I actually have a comment, if, if I could, for Councilmember Alkma. Upon approval of the strategic plan, the consultants have our logo and photos, et cetera. This will be compiled into a booklet and will be on our website, can be emailed out, will have some hard copies, et cetera. So there will be an actual document that will be complete, that we can share.
That answers that question. I have one. I think that one of the benefits of this strategic plan is that it relates directly with the item that was just on the agenda under fiscal sustainability, guiding principle three, implement fiscally sustainable initiatives that allow the town to proactively plan for, recruit, grow, and retain top human resources. So we can directly link what our programs are with items in the strategic plan. It also falls the same subject under innovative and high-performing organization because we have identified that it's very important in this council to have the best possible employees that we can recruit and maintain.
Tom and Dusty, did you have a comment?
No, I will be proposing an amendment, but I have no comment at this point.
So I thought it was one of the, one of the better, I've been involved in strategic planning for forty years. And I thought that was one of the better efforts that, that I've seen. It's the second one I've done at a town level, but, you know, I've seen military strategic plans that were, were far less organized than this one. And I thought the, both the contractors and the staff did a good job preparing. And we were able to, to go through everything and make all the changes that were necessary. And I thought, I think it's a very solid document.
Any comments from council here on the dais? At, at this point then, I guess we're looking for the motion that is in the agenda, although Tom.
I think you need to make the motion first and then ask for, if, if there's anyone who wants to make an amendment.
You're absolutely right, we did a public comment, I'm sure we did. Public comment.
I have no one wishing.
No one wishing to speak, okay. We are looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion. Motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three Town Council Strategic Plan.
And I'll second that.
Okay, and I'd like to make an amendment. Everyone listening? Okay, if you, am I, is it clear what I'm saying?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I would ask you to look at page forty-nine of one sixty-six. And it probably would not be a surprise to say that I'm concerned about the dark skies, which is the third box up from the bottom. And my suggestion, as it now states, explore dark skies policy implications to the town. I would like to change that to minimize lighting in the town that obscures our view of natural features of the night sky. And my thinking is studying doesn't necessarily do anything. I think that we probably should be looking at actions to protect the dark skies. Is that clear?
Yes, what specific language do you want there?
Okay, what I'm suggesting the language be, minimize lighting in the town that obscures our view of the natural features of the night sky.
Second.
I, I also want to note, I thank Luke for passing out information to our businesses. And it's outdoor lighting, the do's and don'ts. And I think that that particular document really does a very nice job of moving us forward toward actual activities, actual progress on dealing with dark skies that go beyond studying. There were some specific suggestions, well, do's and don'ts that he has on there that I think are very good. Certainly goes well beyond exploration. It really does move toward minimizing the lighting in town that obscures dark skies. So that's what I have to say.
The staff have any?
Tom, I'm just going to make some comments if you don't mind with your indulgence on your most. I, I listened to what Ernie said at the last meeting, and he's been consistent on this issue from the very beginning. And I kind of see him as a guardrail sometimes for a combination of history reminder and also to dampen the enthusiasm before there's been research. But I would remind the full council that this language was agreed to in an all-day session that we all attended and participated in. And it feels a little bit unfair without the consultants here and without the wordsmithing and the hours of work we did to attempt to come in and amend this now. And what the language is that we've already all agreed to is on dark sky policy because that's where we're fraught with potential problems. We have a lighting code, which Town Staff says is one of the best around. Yet it contains shielding, downward lighting and so forth. Probably people generally agree, it's not the problem with the organs, it's the problem with focused, consistent enforcement, which has been on the increase in the last couple of years, the enforcement. So I just feel sort of like we've changed the seating at the dining table before the guests have been seated by changing this language after the official process is over. And I, I would respectfully speak against your motion. And I hate to see altruistic language regarding reducing lighting when it doesn't address the core issue, which is what additional policy, if any, is needed in the town with regard to the goal of dark sky. So I can't tell if you're watering things down or you're adding a sugar coating or whatever, but I'm not crazy about the fact that we've already done this and closed the door and closed the book. And we're getting into it tonight without the consultants. So that's just my two cents.
Are there others who would like to comment?
I will as well, I wholeheartedly agree. I, I think that this whole concept needs to be fleshed out, and we're actually looking at, we agreed, we agreed to this language in, in the session. And I think to change it at this time, that, the time to change it was, was during the session, not now.
Okay, thank you. I withdraw my motion.
I will throw the second.
Okay, with the motion, I just want to make a comment here. I, I, I think we all, I, I, I think everybody wants to, to control the lighting in town to the extent that's in the town code, because that is our town code. And the enforcement aspect of that is very spotty, I'll, I'll just say that. So maybe we can, perhaps we should look at having a discussion on enforcement alone as a town agenda item. Tom and Dusty, to, 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 to bring that issue forward, and then we can bring other issues along at the same time. But there are so many unknowns, it's tough to be too specific. But I, I, I think you've, you've got something, you've got a point here. I'm just not sure it's right for this policy here. And how would that suit you?
I think that's good. I think, yeah, what you're saying in terms of enforcement is very significant. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's all about enforcement, so I would agree with that, Bob.
And as, as we heard at, at the merchants meeting, there are merchants in town who feel like it's absolutely necessary. So we're going to have disagreements, we're going to have to have, find ways around those disagreements. It's not to say, and if we need changes in whatever, we can make them at that point. So I'd ask the Town Manager to schedule that, that agenda, please. Okay, so we're back to the original motion, so that's motion has been withdrawn. So it has been made and seconded to accept the strategic plan as is written here, Mister Mayor.
With the one typo corrected, I think.
With, it is, then that is a correction.
Thought it was.
That's how I recall it.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, I believe it's one, the two words are one.
Yes.
Okay, so it, it should be.
Objective analysis.
Objective analysis, okay. With that point made, I think we're ready for a voice, a voice vote, since this is a strategic plan and not financial. So all those in favor of approving the strategic plan, say aye. All those opposed? It is approved seven zero. Next on the agenda is council discussion approval of second reading of ordinance oh, two oh two three dash zero seven, an ordinance of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the town of Cave Creek Town Code, title, Robinville Public Works, Chapter fifty-two, Water, Sections fifty-two dot six oh one, Creation, fifty-two dot six oh two, Functions and Purposes, fifty-two dot six oh three, Membership, Composition, Terms and Qualifications, fifty-two dot six oh four, Committee Organization, fifty-two dot six oh five, Committee Reports, and fifty-two dot six oh six, Limitations of Powers. Presented by the Utilities Director.
Greetings, Mayor and council members. I just wanted to point out, we also have, Michelle Van Quithens is actually available to, to discuss if we need to via Zoom. So this is the second reading of these amendments that we're proposing to town code. And I'll just give a quick background, May two thousand and seven is actually when the town created the Citizens Water Advisory Committee to provide some citizen involvement. I think largely that goes back to the fact that the, the town started operations of two different water systems. But the jurisdictional boundaries or the service boundaries extended outside the municipal boundaries of Cave Creek. So we actually have our unincorporated Maricopa County citizens in the Desert Hill system, and we had the carefree customers at the time. So the, the Water Advisory Committee has gone through two other ordinance revisions since two thousand and seven, one in two thousand and thirteen and one in two thousand and twenty-two to help refine the, the makeup and also their roles and responsibility. What staff is looking to do now, and again, we brought it forward in the last meeting, so this, that was the first reading. This is the second reading, which if passed tonight, will then make it effective, I believe. Is there, I can't remember if there's a waiting period, but it would change the composition, allow staff to move forward with it, I think within a small waiting period. But we're looking to change the focus to, of the committee to more of a community outreach. We want people to help us champion conserving, protecting and enhancing the town's water resources. As we brought forward with some of the discussions on our utility master plan that's, that's moving forward, is, is our water resources, there's one of the main things that we need to have people's, citizens' input. We believe actually having a committee made up of citizens helping us push that forward is probably one of the best things that we can do. We're looking at also combining, the last revision that we did made it a little messy because we, the Citizens Water Advisory Committee actually sit, lives in the water section of town code. And to deal with the fact that we wanted, the council wanted the citizens to get also to have some oversight of the wastewater group, they created a wastewater subcommittee. From a staffing standpoint, that was tricky to manage because we actually had to have two groups of people, two meetings back to back, they weren't the same group of people. So in fact, they're actually both dealing with water resources for the town. Our wastewater, our effluent, currently, our effluent is being sent to the Rangemi on a golf course for their irrigation use. But as we're pointing out, their master plan, the town needs to find some other use when the golf course can't use that water. And as we make, as we work with the golf course, make their use more efficient, we're going to have a new water resource and we need to actually work on that. That's something that we want to actually bring forward with this group and have the citizens involved with that. And to change, to look at changing the name, currently Citizens Water Advisory Committee, sounds, sounds good. It was an easy vernacular, an easy term, the whack to deal with. But we're actually changing, we're thinking of changing the name, propose to change the name to the Utilities Advisory Committee. So that was sort of the major changes. It's touching all six sections of town code. In the backup to the council action report, you'll see the marked up section with the blue text, which shows a lot of revisions to town code. But I suggest that you take a, a look at Exhibit A, which shows the clean version. So we're really trying to, I think, streamline and make it a more efficient and effective group. We did get input from council on this, we have input also from, our received input from the old members of the Water Advisory Committee. So we do think this is a good change for us to move forward. And again, we brought this forward the last meeting, so this is the second reading of this change to town code. So with that, I can answer any questions, or Michelle, or Bill, or, or Gary can answer any questions you might have.
Questions from council? Hearing none, there's public comment?
I have no public comment.
So we're looking for a motion then to, to approve.
May I do it?
Certainly.
Okay, this is a motion to approve second reading of ordinance zero, oh, two oh two three dash oh seven, an ordinance of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the town of Cave Creek Town Code, Title five, Public Works, Chapter fifty-two, Water, Sections fifty-two point six oh one, Creation, fifty-two point six oh two, Functions and Purposes, fifty-two point six oh three, Membership and Composition, Terms and Qualifications, fifty-two point six oh four, Committee Organization, fifty-two point six oh five, Committee Reports, and fifty-two point six oh six, Limitations of Powers. Did I do that correctly?
And I'll second that.
Comments from council?
I, I, I do want to comment. I, I think Sean has really done a good job of understanding. The history that we have in dealing with utilities and uh it it's been uneven. And I think that this will really help to. Find a better way for the public to become involved in a broader range of utilities, all of which are interconnected.
Who had the second?
I did, and I'd just like to comment that. This this whole issue of water is at the top of our list here at town. And anything that we can do to sharpen our work and the context of it. Is a big deal, and I know that whack group has been really helpful, much appreciated, and this is a good step to move that forward. Thanks.
Uh Dusty, you have a comment?
I have no comments, I think it's a good document and I think it needs to pass.
Others on the dais. Um I I'm just gonna say I'm I'm I also support it, had a hand in the number of the issues on it. And a former member of the water advisory committee. Uh it focuses the committee on two really important things to the town and frankly to the state and country, all south of the west is conservation. And the second part is they're gonna have a uh a big role to play on the things that affect the customer, which are rates and policy. So that the the technical parts that were in the old ordinance have largely been removed, which lowers the overhead, the. Uh number of minutes and the amount of time staff needs to prepare for it, and I think we're gonna get a better result. Uh in the future, and that's as a person who got to start on that committee, so.
Well, so did I.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, yeah, we used to have half the council, but that's changed. Okay, so uh at this point then, we'll we'll take a voice vote on this to approve the second reading, all those in favor of uh Tom's. Motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close. The ayes have it, motion carries seven zero.
Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, before we move on, I just wanted to say the ordinance would be in effect in about thirty days um once signed. Uh but staff will be advertising and putting on our website and our social media recruitment for membership. To the committee, so I just wanted to publicly say if you're interested, uh we'll have an application uh available for you to fill out. Um and those appointments probably won't come to council before January at the earliest, you know, just give you, give them time to apply.
Thank you very much. We're now on uh. The presentation of the court, uh let's see, no, I'm sorry, number four, presentation of the quarterly fire and emergency medical report. Presented by the director of community risk reduction, our friend. Ryan Tobin.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, uh we're pleased to be here, Chief Tobin and I, to give you the quarterly report of the activities for the. Um fire and emergency services here in Cave Creek. And uh I have a real quick slideshow to get kind of go through with you. That'll. Yeah, go ahead. There we go. Um this is the uh as in your packet, this is the incidents by month by type. July, August and September, and then for the quarter. So for the quarter, we did a hundred and thirty-two, and again, this is the first quarter of the fiscal year, so we're tracking it two ways. Initially, we're tracking it um by fiscal year, but then at the end of the calendar year, I'll give you a total number that we went on for the calendar year also, but. We're starting again a new fiscal year, so you have the numbers there. Um and the chart. That accompanies this. Um is the top one. And for the top. Top chart, the percentages are. For EMS is seventy-two percent of the calls, special operations is two percent, thirteen percent for service calls, which is all your snakes. And things like that. And um. And in fires was twelve percent, so that's up a little bit. The bottom. Um chart that you see up on the slide is for the year to date, calendar year to date. So a little little this quarter, a little fewer EMS calls, but an increase in fires. And so you can see that that'll change a little bit as we continue to go through it. This is kind of the first quarter um primary notes, um it was a little slower during the quarter in the summer, which was actually good. Um we had several meetings throughout the quarter with uh Perlman and our architects and our builders on the fire station information. We did recertify Whispering Hills as a firewise community, which is our currently our only firewise community, but we've been working now with. Um Rancho Manana to bring them on speed, and so what will be soon have hopefully having Rancho Manana as a second one. Um we didn't have any major incidents on the July Fourth holiday, which was really, really good. We were happy about that. Because we know that there was fireworks out there, we know that the state allows you to buy and sell fireworks over the Fourth of July. And so I was really pleased that we didn't have any major incidents, that's always a. A crap shoot on the Fourth of July, unfortunately, but that's how the state legislature has set that up for us. Um in August, we participated in several Maricopa County meetings, uh the Public Health Coalition meetings. Um we did some uh. Uh beneficial pre-submitment meeting with the town, we talked about this uh when we came with the budget request for that. We did the pre-submitment meetings for the town staff for the fire station design. Uh the plans are in and hopefully we'll get approved soon for that. Um and then I actually was requested by a community just south from uh folks that live and work in Cave Creek. Um assisted Kalina Del Norte with their firewise, because they were not able to get any assistance from Phoenix, because Phoenix does not have a firewise program yet. So we assisted that community with telling them what the guidelines were for firewise to make them a little safer. And then in September, we worked with the town staff to evaluate the water master plan, which you'll hear some more about. Uh from Sean. Um we discontinued the special increase to wildland brush staffing, which as you know, and we budget every year. Um when the season picks up, we put additional staffing on our brush truck that the town owns. So we have two additional staff for the high risk seasons, and that was discontinued. Um we again, we initiated evaluations of Rancho Manana, and we'll continue with that until we can get their firewise certification done. And then it. It just seems to me, and this is just my perception, that we've had a tremendous increase in special event requests. And so we're looking at an awful lot of events, which, you know, I had no last. Um at the the meeting that we had with the business owners, there was. Um some comments that they wanted events to happen, well. From the special events requests, we're getting, we're getting a lot of those in and taking a look at a lot of those, so. Um there seemed to be a pretty good increase, and I think that's gonna happen every year once the hot weather breaks. We're gonna slow down in the summer, obviously, but once the weather breaks, then I think we're gonna get that. And then I have uh Chief Tobin, who's gonna talk about a few things that's happened on a more global. Uh scale here.
Yes, um. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um and a picture that you see is the graduation of. Our first three technical rescue technicians that were uh put through a rigorous training program as a result of. Daisy Mountain Fire District's uh approved grant funding through the urban area securities initiative. That is allowing us to um train our uh twelve members of the Daisy Mountain Fire District. As technical rescue technicians, and as you can see, as in this picture here, one of the components of that is their air rescue operations. And uh. Here you can see they've got big smiles, because it's the most fun training that you'll probably ever be able to do as a firefighter, is technical rescue training, so these are three. That graduated a couple of weeks ago on Friday, we have five additional ones that are in the current training as we speak. And then we'll put four more in when those five are complete to get up to our twelve. Technical rescue technicians, uh so that that's pretty exciting for the district, is pretty exciting for the area. The Phoenix Fire Department had a technical rescue team that was stationed at Station Seventy-two, which is south of the Carefree Highway on Cave Creek Road. They moved that unit uh closer into the core of the city, down to Union Hills and I seventeen, so. Uh when our team gets up and running and fully staffed and fully uh equipped, will be the the north component for technical rescue. Scottsdale has some assistance too, but they're a little ways away, so we're pretty excited about this, my members are excited about it. And uh we're glad that we were able to bring those federal dollars into the community and train our members up.
A quick question, did I hear that there was a helicopter that went down?
Uh I have no knowledge.
Really?
I have no knowledge of anything here in the in the community that went down.
In in our area?
Yes, it was on, it was on Facebook, of course.
Not to my knowledge.
Yeah, okay, well, I'll track that down.
Okay.
If you can find out more information, I'd be happy to have you send that to me. Help you follow up on it.
Uh on another couple or as Jim said, global notes, the fire district is can is proceeding on the development. Of fire station one forty-four, which is at twenty-four oh two East Cloud Road, West Cave Creek, East Desert Hills. We went out for the similar process the town of Cave Creek did, and we selected a construction manager at risk. Which we selected Will Willman Construction Company to be our CM and C M A R. Uh for that, so we are in pre-construction discussions with the Willman Corporation and our architect as well as Perlman. Perlman was the architect on Station One Forty-five, which is on Twelfth Avenue in Desert Hills. We are site adapting that existing fire station that we've already built onto the property at twenty-four oh two East Cloud. So that we could get a economy of scale, building the same station from one location onto the other, just site adapting it with different utilities, but. We're moving forward with that. Um we're also moving forward with an attempt to relocate the ambulance that's we that's uh stationed here in the town of Cave Creek. Commonly referred to as Medic One Forty-seven, uh staffed with an EMT and a paramedic twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Uh as a result of the construction of your fire station here and the movement of or the relocation of the fire. Resources that are here, we're also trying to relocate those uh two EMS employees that work for the district. They won't uh be accommodated in the existing trailer that we're using for the firefighters, so we are making as. As much progress as we can to maintain that ambulance here in the town, so that we can maintain our response times that are required. For our certificate of necessity with through the Department of Health Services. Um. And that's probably about the most of the global stuff and certainly available for any questions that you might have, and other than helicopters crashing.
It wasn't, it wasn't, it didn't go down. They used one at Seventh Avenue and Irvine helicopter overhead.
Yeah.
Some incident.
Yeah, yeah. So if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer those, otherwise, okay, yes.
Per our town manager's report.
Mm-hmm.
Uh several of the businesses that are in the Sprouts location are failing their fire inspections. And and it concerns me, and I'd like to know why that is.
Um. Do you want? Let me take it. I I can go by my experience as thirty-some years with as the farm marshal and enforcer in Scottsdale. Um typically, the first time through or second time through. That um the fire inspections are are done and they start doing that again, you'll have a lot of issues to correct. And I think that's what's happening prior to the town taking over the responsibility of the fire inspections. With the uh building fire and safety division. Um those inspections were done by rural metro. And um when we made the transition at the start with Daisy Mountain, we took over the responsibility for those inspections. And we did not get any. Um past paperwork or past history, so in essence, everything we go into is a brand new start. And so I don't know what the issues of the the failures are, but I can talk with with Carrie and and Ben to find out.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I I actually spoke to Ben, um our building and fire official today, first of all. Um he was in the entire area, the the focus of was. You generally go in and he's looking at all the businesses, why it just happened to be that that section and. And he'll be moving through the commercial core, and so you'll see pockets where there's a a several businesses that may fail. But the the key thing that that he mentioned to me is that before they sign off. On just passing everything, every single thing. Um every requirement must be met. And there are things like grease trap, you know, they have to have permitting from the state or other agencies, so if if some permit has expired. Or they haven't gotten, they have to make sure that they have that before they sign off on a complete pass. So every single thing that we don't necessarily have control over. And and the second thing that he said is it's not like a building inspection, they do not get. Two tries and they have to pay double fines, it's nothing like that. They want everyone to be in compliance, and we work with them to make sure they come into compliance. And they also realize that sometimes it could take a month or two months. To hear back from the state to make sure they have their certificate or whatever it is. Some things are simple. They have a blocked exit or something, they can just move things, but but there are things that that cause the delay. So it it they do work with all of the businesses to make sure they come into compliance. Which is the most important thing, we want them to be in compliance.
And and if I can make one additional comment, when you go into the different types of businesses, there's a different types of requirements, so sometimes you get. Things like your your sprinkler system hasn't been inspected, so you say get that done by a a third party. Your hood system needs to be inspected, it's supposed to be done every six months, this one was done eight months ago, so you you, those are the kind of things that you see. But if it's an important or safety issue, as uh Carrie mentioned, the exits being blocked or something like that, then they'll fix that right away. But it's more of the compliance stuff, but you, it's not uncommon to see that in almost every inspection that we did, you would have some type of comment. Saying this needs to be addressed and we'll come back and make sure you do it.
Uh Mr. Mayor, uh Jim, um these reports are so great, but I just sort of want to rhetorically ask the mayor and the council. If we could get a quarterly report in the sheriff's office that would be comparable to what you guys do. Because lately, we've had some discussion about. We don't really know what's happening in the community with regard to the sheriff, and we had the new district commander here twice, or three times really with the business meeting. But it would be so great, uh you guys, I mean, we see you, it seems like more often, but the fact that there's an official quarterly report. I wish, years ago, we used to have the local district commander, uh kind of the council meetings once a month. But maybe we can make this a drag race or a competition between fire officials and sheriffs.
That's not fair to those guys.
Not fair to those guys, no.
We always win.
But anyway. I'd like to see the same thing.
Because I mean, I think most of us learned something from these presentations that we otherwise would not know, as well as anybody listening. And you know, specifically, I think Dusty, council member Rhodes at the previous meeting brought up. We need an incident report in town, we don't really know what's happening. You know, we've had in the last sixty days, we've had a suicide with the police response, and we've had. Other issues and so forth, and if we could just get them to kind of follow your lead with a briefing, it sure would be swell, so.
But we have quarterly uh reports from the sheriff, we have had in the past, I I may not have been as routine, uh we see the, we see the documents. But have we uh, we haven't, we didn't see uh the previous sheriff's captain very often.
That's correct, we had, we had a couple of reports from them, but it wasn't set up on a regular quarterly basis. Uh but I'll reach out to the new captain and and see what we can schedule.
Maybe a fire inspection of the sheriff's office next door would get there. That's just kidding.
How much time do we give them to complete this stuff?
Chief, how many times have y'all have y'all got to or had to use the uh the firehouse subs vehicle? Since it's got everything equipped.
Um I would say we about three, would you say about three times?
We we will take it every time.
We've taken it.
Take it every time, but we've actually used it probably three or four times.
Yeah.
But we take it every single time, and so the next step without for um Eric, Vice Mayor and Council, Councilman will be. Um the evaluation of the trails, and I'm on the northeast. Um. Committee with the with the county and the parks to start looking at that stuff. In fact, next Tuesday, we have our first meeting at an anthem to look at. Connecting all the trails, and we've talked quite a bit about the markings and the um. The identifications of the trails and then the access that we'll have, so now they're just cooled off, we will be exploring. A little bit more on how far we can take those vehicles in, but they go every single time, just in case they're needed. Um it and mostly they'll be needed if the sheriffs decide not to fly people out, if their helicopters are down or something like that. As opposed to using the big wheel that you've seen, it's much easier to put them on that, bring it out, but we use, take it every time.
So you don't need new tires yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet. Daisy, man, just to to that point, we we had gotten a grant a few years ago uh for a off-road. Like Razor Can-Am type of a um off-road vehicle to use for this type of work, and we changed course with that. And instead of utilizing one of those, as we we just. Put in service a Jeep vehicle with a. The the Jeeps that have the bed in the back, like a pickup truck bed, and we've adapted that to carry our equipment, so now we have an off-road vehicle. That doesn't require a truck to pull a a trailer to pull a Can-Am. It's, we just go into the Jeep and we're able to take that off-road, and it goes most places that we need to go, so. So we we've got that over at the New River Station as well. So we're doing, we're we're trying to get our hands around the off-road vehicle stuff.
All right.
Yeah.
Uh, is, are there any comments from the council members online? Or I should say.
I I've heard a lot of good comments about the uh, services now that we've changed to Daisy Mountain. And I want to thank everyone who made that possible.
No, I thought it was an excellent report.
Okay, any other questions from council seeing?
Mayor, I have public comment.
We have public comment on this?
David Phelps.
Nobody could sit there and clap the whole evening.
Come on, I gave you one whole meeting. Um, David Phelps, Cape Creek resident. I wanted to report that Jim and I worked together. He still came in afterwards. Uh, we had a very good working relationship to put on the um, uh, Cave Creek Dark Skies event. Um, we were actually going to do a little faux pas and we wanted to park cars in the helicopter landing spot. But Jim said, no, that probably wouldn't be a good idea. So we followed his lead. We did use a document that we showing him how we were getting in, how we are going to get out if there was an issue. We are now uh, with dark skies, looking at our safety procedures in order to reduce the potential for an incident for a fire out there because we do have people coming from all parts of the valley to that yearly event. And we do want to reduce the risk on our town. Last thing we want to do is be known for the the NGO that set the Spur Cross Ranch facility on fire. I too uh, would like to um, echo uh, Councilman Augertons and uh, Dusty Rhodes comments. Uh, I very much appreciate the uh, quarterly report. I thought it was excellent. And uh, Tom, I think you're spot on with uh, requesting that we should be able to get this kind of information on the kind of activities that are being reported and are being uh, that are occurring in our town from the um, Sheriff's Department. And uh, maybe you could convince the town marshal that that's something that he needs to work on. Um, the third question or comment mayor uh, is for uh, Jim. It's been asked around town and and people want to know, is Thanksgiving your favorite holiday?
If I can answer that, is is that a reflection of how much weight I've put on lately?
No. Curiosity.
It's one of them.
Hey, you're burning out my daylight here. It's one of his favorite. That's good to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Any more? That's it. Okay. Well, thank you very much. I think Daisy Mountain's done a wonderful job. I'm just, I just love to brag on you and uh, the the additional safety that th- this whole region here has uh, with you guys in place. So thank you very much, Ryan.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the presentation of the quarterly financial report presented by the finance director. We we might want to invest in a clicker that works. Oh.
Okay. Good evening, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Town Council. Uh, tonight I will be presenting the town's financial results for the three months ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, or the first quarter of fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. The baseline target measurement uh, to budget for this first quarter of the fiscal year is twenty-five percent. I will be starting by presenting the information for the major um, general governmental funds, uh, followed by the financial report for the enterprise funds. We're gonna start with the general fund. And uh, the first slide shows the town's general fund revenues as of September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Revenue collected is three million four seventy-six, one fifty-two, which is twenty-five point three percent of the adopted budget and is in line with our twenty-five percent um, baseline target. The next slide is a graph view of the previous slide where the brown line represents actual revenues and the green line represents the budget and shows actual revenues tracking on target with our budget for the first quarter of the fiscal year. The next slide shows the breakdown of the general fund revenues. The town has uh, collected a little over two point two million dollars in local taxes or twenty-one point nine percent of budget. Local fees are trending above budget at two seventy, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars or forty-eight point eight percent of budget due um, to an increase in building permits permitted and submitted and issued. Um, state revenues are five hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and are right on track with budget at twenty-five point one percent. Miscellaneous revenues of sixty-one thousand, five ninety-seven are slightly above budget at thirty-one point six percent. And interest income revenue of three hundred and three hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-six is outperforming budget at sixty-one point seven percent due to increased interest rates um, on our town investments. Uh, this slide um, shows a pie graph uh, of the largest source of um, and shows the largest source of our general fund revenues is from local taxes, which is the blue piece of the pie. Um, which includes town sales tax and construction sales tax, followed by um, it's the state revenue piece of the pie, which is shown there in green, which includes the town portion of state income tax, state sales tax and vehicle license tax. Uh, the third in line is interest income, which is shown there in the um, brown, which is earnings on our town investments, followed by uh, local fees, which is the navy blue piece of the pie, uh, which are the fees the town collects for its services. And the last is miscellaneous revenues, which is the um, small dark brown piece at the top, which includes um, our lease revenue, rental property income and other small uh, miscellaneous revenue items. Okay, so moving on to uh, general fund operating expenditures through the end of the first quarter. Um, all general fund departments are trending um, consistent within the budget target of um, around twenty-five percent through the um, quarter end of September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. The next slide shows general fund capital expenditures through the end of the first quarter. All department capital expenditures are on track or below budget as capital projects are getting um, underway for um, the fiscal year. So overall, um, the general fund um, is on target, both um, with revenues and expenditures and is in good um, financial shape for the first quarter of our fiscal year. And looking at the other major uh, general governmental funds, we've got uh, the town, the first one is the um, highway user uh, revenue fund or HERF. Uh, the town has received ninety-five thousand, sixty-three dollars or twenty-four point four percent of state HERF revenues and interest income of four thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars. Um, and there have been no expenditures that as of the end of first quarter um, spent on HERF. Um, Spur Cross is the other um, major general government fund uh, that we are presenting, I'm presenting tonight here. It's received three hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars or twenty-three and a half percent of local taxes and interest income of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-three through the first quarter. Um, we've expended uh, fifty-four thousand or twenty-five percent of the expenditure budget to Maricopa County for administration of the um, park. Moving from general government to the enterprise funds, the first enterprise fund shown is the wastewater fund. Um, quarter to date revenues um, and operating expenditures are uh, both on target. One quarter um, through the fiscal year, local sales taxes and sewer user fee revenues collected are eight hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars or twenty-four point eight percent of budget. And operating expenses are three hundred and four thousand, six hundred and eighty or nineteen point six percent of budget. Capital project expenses for wastewater of sixty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars are under budget at the end of the first quarter. Uh, the wastewater service truck purchase and um, the integrated utility master plan charges for the wastewater treatment uh, plant account for the seven percent in capital um, project expenditures um, at the end of the first quarter. No debt service expense was required or made um, for the first quarter. And this next slide is just a pie graph presentation of the wastewater revenue expenses for the quarter. And it shows the revenue in the um, brown portion of the pie is greater than the expenses here shown in um, green and blue for operating and capital. And so moving on um, to the second enterprise fund, which is Cave Creek Water. Revenues collected through first quarter are a million, seven forty-nine, three hundred, three hundred and forty-three dollars or twenty-seven point one percent of the revenue budget. Uh, no grant monies were received in the um, first quarter of uh, the fiscal year. And operating expenses are a million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and tracking slightly above budget at twenty-nine point three percent. Um, and capital expenditures are under budget. And with the um, with those um, funds being spent on the integrated utility master plan for Cave Creek Water, uh, which accounts for the fourteen thousand, four sixty-eight in that category. Um, and progress payments on the um, pre-design cost for the Phoenix Interconnect uh, project account for the eighty-two thousand, five seventeen um, spent um, on that Phoenix Interconnect capital line shown there. Also, no debt service expense was required or made for this quarter. And again, we have uh, the pie graph presentation for Cave Creek Water revenue expenses for the quarter, which shows in the dark brown um, portion here. Um, that the revenue pie is greater than the operating and capital um, expenses shown there in the green and the blue and the uh, light brown. And then our final um, presentation is for Desert Hills Water. Year to date revenues, or I'm sorry, quarter to date revenues are um, a million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars or twenty-five point one percent of budget. And the operating expenditures accounted for uh, were eight hundred and seventy thousand, twenty-one dollars and are tr- tracking slightly above budget at thirty-one point one or thirty-one point nine percent um, due to the annual N I A back due capital cost payment that um, gets made. It's an annual payment, but it gets made in the first quarter of the year. So um, those, that should level out um, as the year progresses. Uh, capital expenses for Desert Hills at the end of the first quarter were seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars or one point two percent of budget and represent expenses um, also for the uh, integrated utility master plan uh, for Desert Hills Water. And again, um, there were no debt service um, expense or payments that were required to be made uh, for the quarter. And the final slide is the pie graph presentation again for Desert Hills revenues and expenditures showing um, the revenues collected in brown there and our operating and capital projects in the green and uh, blue. So that's all I have for first quarter of two thousand twenty-four, but I'm happy to answer um, any questions you all might have.
Any questions from online members?
No.
The Dais?
Thank you.
Great job.
So the sales tax number were a little bit low, but I suspect that we're going to make up for that in the second and third quarters.
I'm.
Was was that you, Dusty?
No, I I thought it was an excellent report.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mitzi.
Okay.
Good job. You got a lot of money coming in.
Try. Keep on it.
Makes your job easier, doesn't it?
It does make my job a lot easier. People up here spending, right?
Yeah, thank you.
The um, there's public comment on this?
No, we shouldn't speak.
And there is none. So we'll move on to uh, item number six, which is council discussion and possible approval of resolution R twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the town of Cave Creek and the Arizona Department of Revenue that provides for the uniform method of administration, collection, audit and or licensing of transaction privilege tax, use tax, severance tax, jet fuel excise and use taxes and rental occupancy taxes imposed by the state or town. The finance director again.
So I put together just a uh, quick little slide presentation um, on resolution R twenty twenty-three dash oh six um, to adopt the um, intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Revenue for administration collection of our sales tax uh, through their their system. And I um, just wanted to um, state that uh, the local transaction um, privileged tax administration is governed by A R S forty-two dash six zero zero one. Um, this statute requires the Arizona Department of Revenue to um, administer the transaction privilege and use taxes imposed by all cities and towns in the state of Arizona and to enter into an I G A with each city and town to clearly define the working relationship that the Department of Revenue has with um, each city and town. The twenty twenty-three I G A negotiated with the Department of Revenue, um, was negotiated with the Department of Revenue, the Attorney General's Office by the City Tax Administration Council Ruling Groups, which included the um, League of Arizona Cities and Towns, um, various city attorneys and a multitude of tax and I T experts from uh, municipalities across the uh, state. But it established, the twenty twenty-three I G A establishes the framework for collaboration between um, the Arizona Department of Revenue and cities and towns on every aspect of T P T administration. And it provides the um, principles, requirements, responsibilities of both cities and towns and the Arizona Department of Revenue. And it defines many um, specific operational processes related to the tax collection, protection of taxpayer confidentiality and information security. This twenty twenty-three I G A in front of you replaces the um, previous two thousand nineteen I G A that was signed by the town of Cave Creek. It's a complete uh, rewrite of the prior agreement with great emphasis um, that was placed on improving the thoroughness and consistency of the agreement as well as minimizing the need to look through uh, multiple sections of the agreement to get um, answers or get questions, answers to resolve um, any kinds of issues that uh, had come up. But at a high level, um, some of the most notable changes were adds or clarifies the definitions of um, the various terms that were in the agreement. It significantly strengthened taxpayer confidentiality measures. It establish um, establishes new procedures for city and towns and um, the Arizona Department of Revenue to regularly maintain their authorized access list uh, with uh, cities and towns. And it um, also developed a scope of um, city and town assistance that was offered to A D O R related to um, the delinquent tax collection activities and new um, collection reports. So with that, um, my recommendation is um, to ask the mayor and council tonight to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six and approval of the I G A with the um, Arizona Department of Revenue.
Hey, do we have any uh, questions from the online members?
No questions.
No.
The Dais, questions?
Mitzi, I, you know, I know that we can't go into your office and find out who's paying what. But you've, do you have an actual list of the business breakdowns that that you've got that you can look at?
Yes.
Okay. The reason I asked this question is, is with new businesses popping up in 85331 that are not in the town of Cave Creek, I remember years ago, we had to pay the city of Phoenix back a million dollars that was sent to us by mistake by somebody who thought they were actually in Cave Creek. Are you able to to check that list and make sure that we're not getting taxes from somebody who's not actually in the in the political boundaries of the town of Cave Creek?
Yes, we are working on getting a report together to be checking at least by address. Not necessarily business name, but just by address, those somebody can look, take a quick look down the list to see who's in our jurisdiction, who's not, and who's might be paying in the wrong city town. But yes.
That extra revenue is nice until it's not.
Right, until they take it away from you. I know. And we have all of those and people get confused, right? Because their address is Cave Creek and they're not in this jurisdiction. So it adds up fast. But yes, thank you.
Questions from this? I have a couple of questions. Does this cost us anything?
There is no cost. The state of Arizona does not charge the city and towns anymore for.
There's not even a discount on the amount of money they give us back?
No. Used to be, but no longer. Actually, and I, and we have been assessed when they upgraded their tax collection system, they assessed all cities and towns in the state of Arizona percentage over, I don't remember if it was three or five years. But that, we just made that payment and I think it was $4,000.
Is there a way of performing or benchmarking their is, excuse me, let's start again. Is there a way of monitoring or benchmarking their performance in collecting taxes?
If there is, I don't know what that would be.
So they, they did something and money comes in.
Yeah, and they collect by statute there and by law, they're required to collect, but they're audited as well on an annual basis. So I'm assuming their auditors are checking their processes and procedures, making sure stuff's, what's getting collected is going to the right places and whatnot. But
the obscurity of this whole process has always bothered me, but so. Mayor?
Yes. What, what didn't we used to contract with a guy named Al Holler for?
Isn't that what he? We still do. He's our auditor.
He audits.
And he has access to the information. He can look at the addresses and or at least get the information so we can look at the addresses, make sure they're in the town. And he works with the building permitting process and looks at that to make sure that if it's a owner occupied build, they have to live in it for two years or whatever the rules are, you know, so make sure that they don't sell the property before their two years is up. They have to go back and pay all the construction, sales tax, et cetera. We also share our business license, you know, information with the state so that they know to look for those businesses.
Oh, I know about that.
So we found in the STR process that there were a number of locations that were not registered or paying their taxes. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Are you running for Congress or something?
Well, they have to be listed. I mean, it's, it's their property and they might have a a converted garage or an accessory dwelling unit or whatever that they use. So if they rent it out to someone and they're not advertising, how would anyone know?
But that's the beauty of that ordinance. Now, now they have to show you the TPT license.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna drop this.
And they have to, and they have to get a business license and the business license will be shared with the Department of Revenue.
Okay, this is, there is public comment on this?
David Phelps?
David Phelps, town resident. Thank you very much for bringing this forward. I think it's a good agreement for the town. Hopefully for the state. Question, Mr. Mayor, Mitzi, regarding the rental tax ban, the effect on Cave Creek for Prop 400. I had to ask you about that before and it was kind of new. Do we have any more information about that?
Is anybody on the Dais? You're really not permitted to to question unless you can get somebody here who's interested in.
Oh, I ask you to.
Oh, you asked me? I was, I'm not interested.
I was giving you the left side.
What do you really think?
Mitzi.
Talking out of this side.
Mayor and council, I think Mr. Phelps is referring to the short-term rental tax that is going.
My understanding was it was a
Or the residential.
Housing rental tax.
And it is, it's the residential rental tax that will be going away on January 1st of 2025.
So it is going away.
Yes.
But we didn't, we didn't have one, did we?
We, that's for it's, it's insignificant to us. But yes, that's for rentals that are 30 days or more.
So there's no net really effect, Mr. Mayor.
There's definitely no effect. Yeah, the rental tax did not hurt us because we weren't, it hurt some other people pretty badly.
Yeah, there was some East Valley cities talking about.
Legislatures promised to make it up to the towns that have been hurt.
Okay, thank you very much.
No additional.
No further comments? This was for oh, I see. We have to motion, we have a motion on this one too.
Mayor, I can do that if you'd like.
Please.
Motion to approve resolution R 2023-26 authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the town of Cave Creek and the Arizona Department of Revenue that provides for the uniform method of administration, collection, audit and or licensing of transaction privilege, privilege tax, use tax, severance tax, jet fuel excise tax, excise and use taxes and rental occupancy taxes imposed by the state or town.
This is not financial, so we can do this by a voice vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. The ayes have it, 7-0. Motion adjourned, please.
Salute.
And happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Oh, happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks to all.